I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dan, would you please, in a word, please?
Sure.
Give a volume high, please.
Your heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over our community, our country, and our world as we go through the scares that are out there right now, that we can make it through this soundly and that we can make wise decisions on behalf of our citizens here in our country. Your Father, I pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that they can be a blessing to you and a blessing to the citizens that we represent. In your name we pray.
A reading, minutes from March 2nd.
Motion to approve this is going to be.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Approve of the agenda. Need changes or additions to the agenda.
Motion will approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Pillar. And second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on, 5A, annexation, North Shore DOT right away.
You'll have to, he'll have to jump around a little bit because the public hearing must advertise for 16.
Oh.
You know, I don't tell the six, 10 will work.
Okay, we will do that. We will go down to six. Thank you, Monty. Forgot that. Six, free reduce hall rent for our County Steel Conservation District.
That's pretty much moved, no, I did get an email late this afternoon.
Cancelled.
Cancelled.
That was easy.
Motion to table that.
No, they can reapply.
8A, building permit. Extra territorial jurisdiction for Chris Miller.
Oh, Clyde Miller.
I'm sorry, Clyde Miller. My bad. And that is for Western Steel Builders Project.
So, so is that right adjacent to that, the onset that?
It will be actually farther south.
I, I had read that in the Burbage, that it was south of Tom's home. But when I look at the shape on that, it almost made it look like it was up by that onset, so I'm trying to.
Is there a picture on there, um, parts?
Well, you know, Tom's, their, their daughter, that got moved off of there now.
Oh.
So it's not out there.
Yeah, so this will be more or less close to that area where that trailer house was.
Okay.
It's a little misleading because this is a separate parcel that was cut off from the other stuff that that Nicholson's had. Cause you're 2,300 feet from the section line. Corner of the section, so that gets you down there only.
And, and again, the reason that we are addressing this?
Because it's within our extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's not commercial or anything, it is on a headland.
Okay, so, and that differ, that differs from when it's in city limits.
And the use, the storage structure is permitted within the egg zoning district. There was a separate parcel out there. And they took apart of those lots two and three to make that separate.
There will be the motion to approve this, they're going to report.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Motion. We have a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
So it looks like they've got plumbing and everything in there.
There will be a bathroom in there.
Is it gonna be just a shop or is it like a shop house or a shop?
Just, it's storage and use on the permit.
Yeah, there will be a bathroom, but it's just basically a storage shop. He wants to put his camp in there or something. For the most part. He actually lives in Hawaii, I was told.
My name's brother.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Vanor.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. First, a building permit, WRT. Guys, how do we want?
Good.
Good. Men in black. Come on up, what do you got? Tell us what's going on.
I know all of you, I'm not sure, crush it, the CEO of WRT.
Casey Stern.
James Viner is our operation, the rest of you, whether you're admitted or not, I know you. We, we did an assessment over the last probably year plus regarding our facility. We've had a lot of items in the cap home budgets, whether it's windows, a roof. We've got six different air conditioning systems in our facility on Main Street, and we have three separate boilers. There's just a lot of things that are end of life. Not to mention, we'd like to have a little more updated look on the outside of the building. And it took us kind of full circle to, let's, let's back up and do a full facility needs assessment. We've got our operations teams completely split up. All the departments are physically within the building separated from one another. Through this assessment with TL Stroh Architects on Fargo and meeting with our board of directors, we did feel that the best course of action moving forward was to, was to go to a, we say a complete new build, but it's the two-story building on the end of Main Street, directly east, I'm sorry, west of B's Cafe. That two-story building is, I guess, probably our most critical infrastructure. We have a lot of our, our network hubbed out of there. So that two-story building is going to stay in place. Everything west of there, the, the single-story building is, is going to get demoed in this plan and we would build a, a new two-story building, which is, which is what you saw in that very first picture right there, that's kind of the proposed, that's, that's a proposed rendering of the drawing. I guess the building permit came in, everything was put together, but the permit was put together by TL Stroh Architects. The way we're looking at doing the project, we have a prime general contractor, which is Capital City Construction of Bismarck, a prime electrical contractor, Electrical Systems Incorporated, and a prime mechanical contractor, H.A. Thompson, Thompson and Sons. We reached out to some of the locals, we, we would have preferred to have local contractors be the prime contractors, and they were, they were given the opportunities to, to be the prime and they just said they didn't feel like they had the resources to dedicate to a project of that magnitude. So we're going to work with the three primes and they're going to, you know, building some will work, but then there's going to be a decent amount that they will sub out. We've given them a list of all of our, all of the, the contractors within our service area and we, we'd like to try and keep that work local and with our folks here in our service area as much as we can. Being a co-op, we're owned by all of our customers and members, so it just seems like the, the right thing to do. Not too much, not put into that, if you see it, so. I guess you guys see the, see the building permit. We're looking at about 37,000 square feet when it's all said and done. We're looking at, what, 25 and a half thousand square foot of, of new build between the two floors. We would get all of our.
The westernmost portion of this building ends where it ends right now, or are you going?
Say it again.
The, the westernmost portion of the new two-story portion there?
It's going to go right to the property line where we are built to.
Right now.
You've probably heard rumors around town.
Yes.
Couple of our board members heard the same rumors as well. We have got an interest in the property and they have an interest in selling it to us, but that's.
But not for purposes of.
No, this building will move forward whether or without that purchase, again.
Okay.
We're, we're waiting on appraisal to see what it's worth and that will kind of dictate what level of interest we have.
I think that'd be a really nice improvement on that area.
I, I think it's a, that's a cool looking facility and we just talked to, I heard her hang across the screen and asked him if he would care if we put a camera up on the roof so we can kind of watch progress.
Sure.
He said, oh, pretty exciting, pretty neat.
Yes.
Maybe everybody will figure out we need to do something next, he kind of chuckled. Yeah, he, he agreed, thought it would be a nice add to the community. And we're, we're pretty excited about it.
Sure, you were seeing the sidewalk and, uh, being pitched for? Broke, broke out or any part of the street along, along there is going to be.
At this point, we're not, we're not anticipating blocking off the street, obviously we, through the contractors, they have to work with whatever they have to do with the sidewalks.
And you, you've seen some of the feedback from, from the city engineers?
Yeah, Monty forwarded that email and there was, the last item on there, I called Monty, I wanted to make sure that wasn't an issue with this project and that is the alley behind, uh, between us and the post office. It's been, it's been needing work for some period of time and I've given Monty due, I've communicated with all of our employees that not, that not being repaired yet is more a function of, of us asking for it to not be because of this project coming up. I think it'd be a lot easier to, to wait and make that investment after our project is done versus us working through this and then doing some damage to that alley after it gets done, so. But I think there was some drainage in there that obviously we're going to have some, some assessments that we're going to be, you know, liable for it, I guess.
Sure.
And, and we're fine with that. But as far as drainage, we didn't feel that that pertained to our property. The rest of the comments, getting the city of the pre-construction being that's all. My assumption is that's going to happen anyway, and I'm not sure that it does.
Good.
So, Charlie, will that, will that move everybody, I don't know how many you office in the facility across the street to the east, will that move everybody to one building then, or?
Yes.
Other than warehouse?
Yep.
And, and store your vehicles?
Yep, yep. All, all personnel will be housed in this building, yeah.
So then you have an tent with the empty office space, or?
Not, not right at the moment. Not, not right at the moment, no.
You have a question for these gentlemen? I'll set it for you guys.
Yeah, we are doing it. Looking forward to it, it's going to be a, be a great project for that. We could place anybody, etc. on it, but the board is, is all in on this.
Okay. Do you need a motion? Or not? Maybe a motion.
Make a motion and we move forward with the building permit for West River Telephone with the acknowledgement of the stipulations that the city engineering firm put in there with regard to the pitch on the sidewalk. What was the other?
Patching the street.
Patching the street.
Yeah, so it's all, I, I passed all of it along to the architect to ensure that it gets, gets,
Motion by Hiller.
Second.
And second by Hack. Any more discussion?
What's the duration on the project?
All right. We're looking, they said for getting the new building up and getting into it, we're probably looking 10 to 12 months. And to get the renovation done in the two-story building and get everything completed, we're probably looking 12 to 15 months. I guess one thing I didn't mention as well is there, there, there's no variances that we see in any of the local ordinances or any of the state building code to get this project done, so.
Casey? So I guess, like, what's the fee, I guess, on this, I guess, the building?
Slightly over $19.
And that's going to be, it's going to be, I guess, plenty to, I guess, cover all the expenses with.
The inspections.
Yeah, inspections. And then, and then I guess, this is, I guess, this is, I guess, uh, the property tax, I guess, exempt, is that, or? So is there going to be, I guess, renascence?
It'll be reevaluated, I don't think, there hasn't been any renaissance on that application, so.
Our, our property tax we pay is the telecommunications gross receipts tax, which is the, the two and a half percent of revenue generated within the state in lieu of
Right.
the, the property tax that's based on the mills, so.
Besides the special.
It's still going to be revenue driven, not, you know, not the, how to say, not, not the tax assessed value driven.
Right.
So, that's probably the reason that we haven't, haven't given any thought to go in that direction. It's still, we're still required by the, the grocery receipts tax calculation that it's going to be driven by revenue.
I forgot the telecom.
Those, those violence are due about this time of the year, so they're, on our mind at the moment.
And when are you guys, you're going to break the ground?
Soon, really quick.
Soon, as soon as we say something.
We did, we did have a company come and do our hazardous material assessment. And there's a little bit of abatement that we have to do there, none of it's unexpected, it's the mastic in the floor, tiles and things of that nature. They actually started a little bit of that in the, the old portion of the building today, but they'd be looking at getting into that, or portion that's going to be demoed on April 6th, so.
You know where they're going to be hauling the concrete and break out to our dump site?
The architect's going to rip through that, my assumption is that he would work through the city on that.
They did contact us regarding the concrete, uh, and go up. Go up and go off to the land, those, those landers.
Any other questions, more discussion? Here we have a motion and a second, so roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Vanor.
Aye.
Motion carried, good luck.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, that's all right. We have work to do.
All right. Okay, now the reports. Water Stewart.
Okay, I just wanted to share, we're, we're doing a little bit of experimentation right now with a product that's 20-pound blocks that will hang out in lift stations out there called Easy Does It. And we'll, we'll see how that works, it eats up organic waste and everything like that. We're going to try that out, and then the other thing, in the water realm of things, I've got a seven-inch impeller for one of our pumps out there and, and the loot wear rim that goes along with that. The replacement, it's for lift station number four, the impeller on that particular pump there. And that bid came in at $1,450. So I'd like to make a motion to allow us to move forward with that impeller purchase and rebuild of that.
Okay, we have a motion, Hiller.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Vanor.
Aye, motion carried. Anything else, Dan?
No, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Streets, Senator.
Well, our taring was kind of short lived, but I don't know how much we got done, quite, quite a bit.
Yeah, that's. Pretty good little bump on it for the couple of days that we got to go on.
Kind of loops that the tar can run, actually it's.
New tar car works really well.
Far cry from the old operation we had, but.
Good.
Other than that, unless Steve's got something, I'll be right.
Well, just waiting for that new motor to come in for the sweep, or we had to go with the new. The other one was pretty much beyond repair. That should be here hopefully end of this week.
Now the snow modesty and tar.
What's that?
I said there's snow modesty.
Lost a little bit of time with that.
Anything else, Jason?
Uh, no, no.
I didn't go on the, the new garbage truck, and that's, the chassis is in Fargo, first waiting, waiting for parts and I thought he said like April 6th is sort of a compact or the body is supposed to come out of hand with them. Hopefully.
All right. Thank you. Finance bussing. Police, fire, 43.
Uh, yes, I did talk to Jim Wolf today about some of the abandoned cars and cleaning up the yards in the community, and he has been working on it. He's trying to take it a little bit slower, not bombarding everybody, so they don't get bombarded, we're trying to keep track of who they've served and not. So they're trying to do like five at a time, sending out letters, him and Monty have gone out and taken pictures of some places that will be receiving letters and they're prioritizing them. They have served four individuals, trying to get a hold of the fifth. Two of them, they just received their letters, so they do have the 30 days to clean it up. One of them has registered his vehicle, so that's all they got to do.
Yeah, they, they're registered and licensed, so.
Yeah, and so they've done that. But yeah, he's, he's still continuing, they're still looking out and seeing what they can find and, and they are working on it, but it does take at least 30 days to, to get anything done, so.
It's by our next meeting, some of those.
And yeah, some of them should be.
Time frame will be up.
Yep, yeah, and it's, he's having trouble finding these people. They know he's coming, so.
Okay.
But yeah.
All right, anything else next?
Nope, that should be it.
Thank you. Buster's next, here, he took off for Washington State, ride go right now. He's, he's babysitting grandkids. And under my report, the only thing I wanted to touch base on is Monty, I visited this morning. There are, there are some cities in North Shore that are closing their city hall offices, they're keeping them staffed, uh, they're just locking the door, people can use the drop box to put payment in or call if they have emergency need, if there's a water issue or whatnot. I don't know if we have that kind of traffic here, but Monty's keeping track of how many cities are doing that on the list serve. And I think we're, right now, I think we're pretty safe and our employees feel safe. Stay status quo for now, keep her open. I did get, also did, yesterday I had a citizen asking what the city is doing in response to the whole COVID-19. I say we are under directive of the Health Department and we have what Governor Bergen was said and done, so we, we are not doing anything above and beyond. We are directing people to our website, also to Scotty Medical Center's website. And the Chamber, they also have things on there. The hospital's website has about a 20-minute video for people to watch if they want to, but it's basically common sense things, we'll see hygiene, items that are, you know, that we're probably, most of us are probably doing already, but there's nothing drastic on any of these lists or places. All right, moving on, 10A, 101 Things to Do Advertising Circular. So we have.
We have participated in this in the past, basically with a quarter page, full color advertisement at a cost of $210.
Races are the same way in this show.
Races are the same in this. And generally, we'll go through and update some of the photos and stuff, otherwise it's pretty static advertising.
A little bit more left to do.
Motion to approve.
210?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
O'Vanor.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. All right. Funds requested for the street flower baskets that hang on the power line or the poles. This request comes from the Chamber. You're requesting, uh, somebody request $2,000 donation to use towards the cost of Main Street flower pots and the maintenance of the parking park. I think they are fantastic addition to our Main Street every summer. We comment about them all the time from people that are coming through.
Do we have any, do we have flowers and stuff in the past?
I couldn't find any record on it. NOHCBD, I think last year was the first year that, that, that part of the organization had contributed, so. And in our recent meeting, we went ahead and made a contribution of this amount.
So I guess one question I have is, does the city not own the park?
We own that lot.
So who pays the water? Cause they're asking for money for the water and the garbage and I'm just wondering who.
Chamber is charged.
The Chamber gets charged for the water and? So the city owns the lot?
We own the land, yes.
And they take care of it.
They, they develop and improve.
I know the city guys don't take care of it, but, so the city doesn't pay for the water and the garbage? Okay.
Monty, what is that, do you have any figures on what, what cost to generate electricity, water?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
So electricity is used when, well, last time they didn't have any fans, but that was all down, down here. The lights are LED lights that come on at, at night, I think they're solar. And the pump that runs the water pump in there. So other than that, for power, I'm not sure what else, what else there is. We do, they pull power up in one building for a video camera that they use for security.
And it does stay here between $200 and $300 a month, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're going from April or May through September.
Right, we have that cost if you want to use.
No, if there, if that's within, if it's within the, I don't know if it's like, you know, or else, I don't know.
You know, this summer might a little bit more because for like the all-school reunion, there's probably going to be more activity that week in there. But that's, I wouldn't, I won't, that won't. What the board like to do for this request?
I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to approve.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Vanor.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. 10C, Mental Health Summit attendee.
Basically, I was informed after we had made the sponsorship at the $600 level that includes a complimentary registration for one person to attend. I did get an item for the conference bags from the chamber to put in there if they have this thing now, who knows?
Right.
But I guess up to you guys letting me know who wants to go.
What is the date? April, April or into May?
It's still in April. Sorry, I didn't put that in here, I thought that was last.
Well, it's after the April twenty first, right?
Yeah.
I, I just. Doesn't that, there are not enough for you? I don't remember.
He's still on last.
Buster will be going.
Buster.
Other county. You have a pack?
For the date?
Yeah.
See if this is the right one.
April twenty eighth, twenty ninth and thirtieth.
Which is a two to day true service thing.
There's a chance I could go on that. Twenty ninth.
We can talk about the next meeting too for now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Next two meetings.
Okay.
Can, can we do it that way where if Jerry wanted to go on the twenty ninth and. Somebody else wanted to go on the thirtieth, they could.
I can check with them and see if we just have city of Hayes and someone.
Hand off the badge.
Yeah, a ton.
I'll check with them.
All right, let's roll back up to uh, five A, please. So, public hearing. We will open the public hearing now for the uh, resolution to annex. Annexation to DOT right away, right away two hundred. Is there anyone here in favor or opposition? Marvin?
Neither, it's because I'm not as informed as I should be. I apologize for that.
Okay.
I'm here to gather.
Okay, all right. Well, if there is nobody here to testify in favor or opposition of. The annexation of DOT right away, we will close the public hearing.
Uh, before you do.
Yes.
Yeah, you should have all had a copy of the letter from Mr. Siler in your package. And then also from North Dakota DOT. Are the only comments that we received regarding the annexation.
Any questions?
But that is, that is along that way that. Right, right over by his property is, is part of the annexation plan. Trying to remember.
It's adjacent to his property.
Right, yes, not his property itself, but.
It's adjacent to his property.
Mr. Preston.
Yeah.
The uh. The legal requirement is that we only notify the owners of each parcel within the area to be annexed.
Correct.
So Mr. Siler is adjacent, but does not fall within the legal requirement of notice. I, maybe he's asking for this courtesy type of notice. But obviously he's already aware of what's going on since he wrote the letter.
I, I thought Daniel went in the, the recording any information from the meeting. Stipulated the reason that, that the city was looking to do this so that we could. Move forward with the development of those areas.
Yeah.
And as for the county, um, since it isn't, uh, I mean, we, we did the same thing in the county, we did notify. Uh, Mr. Troy and County Commission through him and uh. They, this is non taxable property, so it doesn't really affect the county in any noticeable way, but I don't know. Unless you have some other.
No, I do not that.
And the city maintains this property. We've been mowing it, we've been providing snow removal. Keep of the walking path, not the opposite side of the ditch, of course, but. Inside where it ends.
It's very, we read everything.
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, it's, it's just. Yeah, for his property question, his property.
No, it's his driveway, it's probably the start to a fair.
His driveway is on a section.
Mm-hmm.
And that section that has never been closed, that runs both directions. That has been a separate issue, but. The first one that's still open, the section line, so.
Thank you, Pat. Any other comments or concerns? So the answer, I guess, answer, I guess, Kurt's, I guess, sort of a question, he's gonna see no, no kind of change at all. Like taxes or anything, right?
The only change he'll see is what you spend. On the lights.
Yeah, and that won't affect him either since he's rural.
What's that?
And that won't affect him either because he's rural, except for the way it's shining, he might see some difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he should be happy that. Unless he doesn't like the light. Okay, at this time then, uh, if there's no other comments or discussion, we will close the public hearing.
We want somebody just to give him a, a phone call. He apparently doesn't subscribe to the Hazen Star. He's just looking for some form of communication to let him know what's, what's going on with it. Maybe he's just heard something across the coffee table or something, or like some clarification. So you've given him all the detail that he would need?
Okay.
And I would, and I would, I would consider that sufficient then.
Okay, so then five A, moving back to our regular. Meeting.
Yeah, basically you need action now to formally annex this in since the hearing is on and the notices have been sent.
Okay, we need a formal, formal action now to continue with the project. So moved, second motion by Keller. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovino.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Make a good project. Five B, engineers report and agenda. Obviously, our engineer is not here. I do have some information from Jared on. Uh, the hourly rate that it'll cost to. Do the survey and all the work for the eight parcels. That we're looking at annexing. And that rate is uh, not to exceed four thousand two hundred dollars. And this is the total of plats. Anyone else like to see that?
If work for him.
To clarify, it was talked at the last meeting that there were three parcels. Well, when he replanted that Oxbow additional remisner block, there were properties on the south side of the creek that were also defined, so. Our annexation would include those as well.
Okay. Just trying to. For clarification, number of them, so that makes.
Yeah, that's why those backyard. So the question I have is, I guess, that was just surveyed, right? And um.
Yeah.
Planted already, right?
Well, they, they have prepared the annexation plans.
Isn't it pretty much the same?
The, the drawing will be the same, but the, yeah, there's a little bit of. Of the work to be really doing. And they are working on descriptions that are on the here documents, that's why it can be taken as well. They don't want to actually send the surveyor up. The way it sounds.
Yeah, it looks like the work should, will halfway be done for the board. I know.
You said to Monty they don't send the surveyor up?
They won't need to because we found, or I found all the documents that are recorded for all the other parcels, so they can work off. That description to actually create the plats.
And, and that's taken into account with their estimate that they've shot us.
And other than that, that's all I have for his report and agenda. And this might be of something.
Well, we do have, since the scope of that street project changed, we will have to submit the full plan now to do the lights east and west in the path and. So we would need approval to have Jerry sign the. The new. The new application though.
The new application is ready to go.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the application has been submitted. It was just submitted in two forms, one if we didn't annex and one if we did annex now. We just need this document to go perform that we are annexing the property.
I can motion approve the updated application.
Motion by hack.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. So in this, on this project, is it like a ninety ten or like eighty? Uh, I thought it was. The sixty forty, my, my thinking of the water tower.
That's the water tower. I wanna say this one was eighty twenty. For some reason eighty twenty sticks in my head.
Then the plan is to do the. Do the underpass too?
That is in this project then as well, if DOT approves.
Um, really nice.
Yeah.
Here we have a motion and then we have a second. More discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovino.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Moving now to twelve A, Main Street Community Champion Action Plan. Monty, you did such a great job explaining that to me this morning.
Yeah, let's see if I can remember.
Do it again, please.
What did I say? Through the Main Street Initiative, there is an opportunity for grant funds and obviously the level of participation in the. Program makes a difference. We have approved a proclamation last fall already to be a Main Street community. But we have not submitted an action plan. Basically, the action plan are items that we intend to work on within, you know. A respectable timeframe. By doing so, but this would allow us to be a champion community. Which for these grants puts us at a different level. The funding levels are higher and the participation. The split on it to say is, is less. Uh, if we're just a Main Street community, we're eligible for up to twenty five thousand dollars for our planning grant. And we're responsible for twenty five percent. If we're a champion community, we're eligible for thirty thousand dollars and our share is twenty percent. So I, uh, Antoinette developed this or created this forum. These were just some of the ideas that her, Buster and I had come up with. Obviously, we can add to this plan as we go along to keep it alive and. And meeting the needs of our citizens, but this would, this would at least get us started so that it could be reviewed to see if we can qualify as a Main Street champion.
I think it's kind of a no brainer. To get better, better, more matching and a little bit more on the bottom line if we could, if we needed. But we need to take action on that.
Make a motion, we move forward to put in the application to become a champion city.
Motion by. Keller, yeah.
Second.
Second by hack, discussion. There you go. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Aye.
Ovino.
Aye, motion carried.
I guess I can go along with that if I can. We do have the grant application for updating our comprehensive plan, including the diversification strategy. Economic development strategy. Uh, and we'll see what happens. I have to do April first, so I will just submit. How far is it that this?
All right, brings us down to approval of the bills.
Monty, how many, how many of the people were under that lodging for the fire school?
I didn't get the detailed statement, uh, or invoice. I just got that one. Uh, the last he had talked, there were nine. For sure, maybe Dave, how many went to fire school? The last he had talked to me, there were at least nine going for the two days or.
I heard some fantastic feedback from that. There were a couple of folks that went for the first time. Got a lot out of it.
Yeah, that's a good.
Motion approved.
A motion to approve the bills by hack, second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovino.
Aye, motion carried.